The program is open to those between 3 and 24 years of age. Also, when the mayor's State of the City address was to reignite in Angelino's the spirit of creativity, innovation, and invention. And to that end, the city recently sponsored an event to help spur on residents to create the next big thing.
The term hacking usually brings to mind the act of illegally breaking into someone's secure network system to wreak digital havoc. But at this L.A. Civic Hackathon, or Hack for L.A., sponsored by the Los Angeles City Controller's Office, the goal was much more benign, lofty even.
Hackathon is when a group of people come together, not necessarily coders, but also UX designers and public activists, come together to build something great for L.A. It could be an app, it can be a webpage.
Even simpler, it's using technology to better city government, as well as the quality of life for its residents.
That's actually one of the reasons why I quit my recent job, because my heart wasn't into it. And I really didn't believe that it would help people in the long run. So I'm always trying to use technology and actually help people.
The Parker app is one example of what this hackathon is striving for. Angelino's can use the Parker app to find available parking spaces instead of wasting gas and clogging up traffic circling streets. The hope is for more great innovations like that to spring forth from events like this.
The city of L.A., and especially City Controller Ron Galperin, encourages the events, because unfortunately, we don't have some of these skills within City Hall. We don't have very many coders, we don't have folks who can create an app on the fly. And that's why we're here.
And at this hackathon held at the Blank Spaces Work Sharing Studio downtown, the word hacker is getting redefined.
A very famous hacker was Benjamin Franklin. He was a hacker for the city, because when the firefighters couldn't fight all of the fires that they had, Benjamin Franklin created a brigade, which was a group of civilians who took it into their own hands to solve that problem. So hacking really just means a group of people who are solving a problem creatively together.
And how about all those comparisons to Silicon Valley? Will Los Angeles ever measure up?
I think we have the potential to be a bigger and better Silicon Valley, because we have more people. We have 10 million people, and that's 10 million potential hackers who can all do really amazing, great things.
The next Hack for L.A. event will be May 31st to June 1st at City Hall. Go to hackforla.org to sign up. Glassell Park has welcomed a lot of goodwill into its community, 135,000 square feet of it. We're talking about a new goodwill megastore that's also helping young people find jobs. Anna Marcos takes us there.
Good morning, welcome to Goodwill.
Welcome indeed to Goodwill's largest flagship store in Southern California, now open for business in Glassell Park. The megastore aims to give back to the community as much as it takes in by training those who are disadvantaged or disabled for jobs in the marketplace. Goodwill funds the programs with the money it makes.
On our first day, more than 560 shoppers entered our store within 40 minutes of opening. And on our three-day sales total smashed every retail record in our nearly 100-year history.
This center provides a critical value to the community. Where unemployment is high, where families struggle.
This is actually for everybody, anyone who's in need of a job, anyone who's looking for a job, anyone who's in need of a direction, Goodwill is there for them. It's not just for the disableds.
Walking down these wide halls, you get the feeling this is more than just another store. There's community rooms where classes like yoga and zumba are scheduled, a career resource center, and even a cafe, Cafe G, which has its own culinary school.
We do workshops on dressing for success, resume building. We also identify the gaps in their skills that they have, and we match them up with vocational training and educational training, so that we can really get them job-ready.
The store has already hired 65 people and plans to add a total of 120 workers. But the number of people it helps place in community jobs will have even more far-reaching effects. The health of residents is also due for a change, as councilmember Mitchell Farrell launches the first farmer's market in the area.
The mission of sustainable economic enterprises fits beautifully with the mission of Goodwill. It's all about sustainability. It's all about providing fresh, farm-grown food to communities that don't always have the best access to fresh, healthy food.
One snip of the ribbon, and this community is already well on its way to a healthier, happier, and more economically stable future. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The farmer's market in Glassell Park, by the way, will now be open every Thursday from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. in front of the Goodwill store. Four members of a hip-hop group hailing from Koreatown, the city's new chief legislative analyst, and World War II veterans are among those honored at this year's Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Month at City Hall. Here's Rasha Goel.
Asian and Pacific Islander American Heritage Month festivities recently kicked off at City Hall.
Some may ask, why is it in May? May 7th, 1843, the first Japanese immigrated to the United States. And to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in May 10th of 1869, these two things were seen as signature events.
There are also 180,000 APIA-owned businesses in L.A. County alone.
Several individuals and groups were recognized for their contributions. This year, hip-hop band quartet Far East Movement was presented with the Dream Award.
The Far East Movement was the first Asian-American music group to earn a number-one hit on the Billboard Hot 100 list.
We really gotta thank the veterans and a lot of the generation before us that kind of paved the way and gave us the opportunity to just live a normal life as L.A. kids.
Search to involve Filipino-Americans, or SIPA, a nonprofit group led by Joel Jacinto, was awarded the Service Award for its work in health, economic, and social service programs. The Spirit Award was given to Deborah Su, executive director of the Center for the Pacific Asian Family, which provides support for domestic violence and sexual assault victims.
Most importantly, I want to share this with the survivors who take on a very courageous journey of healing.
The Hope Award was presented to the city's new chief legislative analyst, Sharon So, and veterans from World War II were honored with the Hero Awards.
We commend them for their bravery and service as Asian-Americans who served in our armed forces after being in internment camps across the southern and western United States.
A deep, full thanks to the city of Los Angeles and bestowed this honor.
After a heartfelt award ceremony in City Hall, the celebration continued outdoors with a variety of tastes from the Asian and Pacific Islander cultures. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
For more information on events being held throughout the month, log onto culturela.org. It's a Hollywood red carpet event for up-and-coming teen filmmakers. The annual L.A. Student Media Festival is put on by one councilmember who believes in investing today in tomorrow's artists. Anna Marcos reports.
It's become something of an Oscar event for L.A.'s younger generation of filmmakers. The Fourth Annual Los Angeles Student Media Festival hit the red carpet in downtown L.A. The producer and creator of this tinsel-town-worthy event, councilmember Paul Krikorian.
Here we are, the entertainment capital of the world. And, you know, we need to continue to develop the best talent, the best professionals in this industry that we can, and there's no better time to start than when they're young.
Students from 12 different high schools submitted their short films. Thirty-seven were chosen for the special screening out of more than 150 entries, with awards in several categories, including a Best of Show prize. The students also got to hobnob with movers and shakers in the industry and with each other.
Since the festival, we've been making a lot of films. Me and my partner, Daniel Yottan, who's not here, we just did a Kickstarter and raised money to do our next short film, that hopefully will be shooting this summer.
I was interested in film like four years ago, when I saw Batman Begins, and I was like, I should do that.
All we can say is, Christopher Nolan, watch out. It seems Batman may soon have a new contender on the scene. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The comedy Butter by Luca Jonsic of El Camino Real Charter High School, as well as the documentary Swords Into Plowshares by Max Cho of Harvard Westlake School, were among the winners. Skid Row receives more funding for homeless services. One councilman comes to the defense of Magic Johnson and the annual blessing of the bicycles. These stories and more in City Beat.
In an attempt to rehabilitate his image after being banned for life by the NBA for racist remarks caught on tape, Clippers owner Donald Sterling spoke with CNN's Anderson Cooper only to drop more bombshells. In the sit-down interview, Sterling accused former Laker great Magic Johnson of not giving back to the African-American community. Councilmember Bernard Parks called a news conference at City Hall to set the record straight.
Whether he is opening Starbucks restaurants, or 24 Hour Fitness, or TGIF Fridays, or the Magic Johnson Theaters here locally across the nation, he has been a particular person that paid attention to minority communities, and the amount of impact he's made on young people and the employment of young people has been significant.
Parks also says Johnson has and continues to raise money for the treatment of HIV/AIDS. More than 100 bicyclists received the annual blessing of the bicycles at Good Samaritan Hospital as part of Metro's Bike Week L.A. The annual week-long event is meant to raise awareness about bicycle safety. This year, Swami Swaru Pananda, a Hindu priest, offered the blessing.
Certainly, we see bicyclists that have come in severely injured over the years. And again, it's part of our mission of keeping our community healthy, to bring about this awareness.
Meanwhile, at a separate Bike Week L.A. event at Union Station, Councilman Mike Bonin joined the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition to release the results of a bike count conducted over several days in September 2013. The report shows the number of people bicycling in Los Angeles is up 7.5% since 2011. And a reminder from the city's Animal Services Department to make sure you are mindful of your pets' well-being during the summer heat. Always make sure that your dog or cat has plenty of fresh water to drink. A bucket that holds a gallon or more of water will stay cool longer than water in a shallow pan. And go on early morning or later evening walks with your dogs to save them from burning their feet walking on hot pavement during the midday heat. The Los Angeles City Council has approved an expanded $3.7 million budget for comprehensive and spot cleaning in Skid Row. This more than doubles the previous budget allocated for Operation Healthy Streets. The additional money will also go towards services such as additional trash cans, toilets and showers, and facilities where the homeless can store their personal belongings.
And in this week in tweets, it was a busy week in Councilman Jose Wezar's 14th district. Regarding the Skid Row funding, the councilman tweeted on May 13th, "Much, much more is needed, but pleased council approved $3.7 million to expand Operation Healthy Streets program, serving Skid Row community in downtown L.A." On May 14th, Wezar tweets this photo of himself, Councilman Tom Labonge and Wrenken Park's general manager, Michael Scholl, along with others, and the caption, "Official groundbreaking for a nearly two-acre park at First and Broadway." Councilman Wezar has committed $10.6 million in local Quimby funds thus far for the Civic Center Park, that is also part of Wrenken Park's goal, to build 50 new parks. Wezar's office also tweeted this photo with former Los Angeles mayor Richard Riordan, captioned, "Happy 90th Birthday, The Pantry Cafe," and thanks, Richard Riordan, for courage and foresight to save it from ruin before downtown L.A. resurgence. In case you didn't know, the pantry is currently owned by Riordan and has been designated as a Los Angeles historic cultural monument. Councilman Mitch O'Farrell recently went door-to-door to hear what's on the minds of area residents. Gil Reyes reports from Silver Lake.
The only thing I consider about the sidewalks, you know, some trees, they're raising their roots, they're raising the sidewalks.
Yes, the tree roots.
If you walk from here all the way to Hoover, you see the sidewalks, they're terrible.
There's this, there's this big initiative to possibly put before the voters that will resurface most of the city streets that are so badly broken down and replace about $700 million worth of city sidewalks. That's something that may or may not make it to the ballot.
Councilman Mitch O'Farrell answering questions in his monthly door-to-door visit with constituents. Today, we're in the community of Silver Lake, where the councilman delivers these free resource guides to every home he visits.
Let us know if you need assistance. Your field deputy's information is on there as well, that's Mary Rodriguez. And the phone number to our field office and our City Hall office, and other helpful phone numbers are there, so, okay?
Some 30 volunteers scour the neighborhood to help deliver the guides. Volunteers get a chance to offer suggestions to the councilman while getting to know their neighborhood.
I moved to Silver Lake about six months ago, and I've been trying to get as involved as possible in my community, so that I know what's going on, what the issues are, and how I can, you know, just put a little bit of sand there and help out.
They're empowered, that if they, if they take action on the street where they live, that they can play a part in changing their neighborhood for the better.
People can request to volunteer for these community walks by logging on to CD13.com and hitting the volunteer icon. In Silver Lake, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
In this week's list of things to do, you're invited to help paint a mural, the annual Memorial Day Parade in the valley, and an exhibit on two of L.A.'s most popular hot
Contribute to a community mural by adding your words or appropriating the words of others. The Hammer Museum will be hosting a pop-up mural event on Sunday, May 25th, for adults and kids five and older from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Families are invited to look closely at works of art in the galleries and then create art inspired by what they see. The event is part of its new Close Encounter series, in which artists encourage families to look closely at art, experiment, and create together. The event is free. The Hammer is located at 10899 Wilshire Boulevard. For parking and other details, go to hammer.cla.edu. The Canoga Park West Hills Chamber will host the 25th Annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 26th. The theme for this year's parade is Saluting the Price of Freedom. The parade will step off at Sherman Way and Owen's Mouth in Canoga Park, starting at 11:00 a.m., ending at the First Baptist Church of Canoga Park. Ronald McDonald will serve as the children's marshal at this year's parade, which will feature a flyover of members of the L.A. Galaxy, and of course, marching bands and equestrian teams. You can contact the Chamber office at 818-884-4222 for more information. Condiments aren't just ketchup and mustard anymore. If you love it spicy, then head over to the Chinese American Museum for L.A. Heat: Taste-Changing Condiments. The exhibit, running now through July 12th, explores the impact of sriracha and tapatio in Los Angeles. Sriracha and tapatio hot sauces are two examples of the recent homegrown all-American condiments that have dramatically impacted American cuisine. The exhibit features artwork from artists who are passionate and reflective about notions of identity, community, and foodways. The Chinese American Museum is located at 425 North Los Angeles Street. For ticket prices and other info, go to camla.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
It's one thing for students to learn in the classroom, but there's nothing more refreshing than getting them moving on a hike in the fresh air. Yana Kay has more.
Fourth grader Narek Caribbean didn't think he'd make it all the way to the top, but now that he has, he says it's worth it.
I think it was great, and it was fun.
His mom also came along for Councilmember Tom Labonge's annual hike-for-health event, and says it's a great way to keep her son active.
Healthy living is number-one priority in my family, so we're excited to be here today.
Nearly 500 fourth and fifth graders from five elementary schools took part in the event, taking the gentle one-and-a-half-mile hike to the top of Mount Hollywood at the Griffith Observatory.
If you hike, you'll be healthy. If you keep your body moving, you'll be healthy.
Representatives from various city departments were on hand, teaching kids about recycling and health and nutrition. But for these kids, the hike was the best part.
It's one of the best things I ever did.
Oh, I love that.
It was kind of fun and kind of scary at the same time.
Once they got to the top, the kids were able to catch their breath, grab some water, and enjoy the stunning views.
It's a nice memory that the students build and will have for a lifetime.
Now, most of these students live in the neighborhood, and they say they never even knew these trails existed. They say from now on, they plan on hiking much more often. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. this week.
Councilmember Tom Labonge has been hosting the event for the last nine years. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Graffiti removal? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
During California's next major earthquake, an epic battle will take place.
Don't fight a brick, the brick will win. DareToPrepare.org.
Hi, I'm Craig Irwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Irwin, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Power City Hall channel.
During California's next major earthquake, an epic battle will take place.
Don't fight a brick, the brick will win. DareToPrepare.org.
Hi, I'm Craig Irwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Irwin, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Power City Hall channel.
Hi, I'm Craig Erwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Erwin, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our City Hall channel.
Marvin Markowitz is here, we welcome Mr. Markowitz, the great leader of the Eliot. Sargent, please close immediately right now at the office. Check off the meeting room when you check the garage, be in the members immediately. Thank you Sergeant. 15th District, which goes from Watts to San Pedro, and also the powerful member, Chairman of the Public Works Committee, Mr. Buscaino, a very important week. Please proceed.
Members of the Public Works Bureau to come join me, to celebrate the great work that they're doing, let's give them a round of applause. We are celebrating National Public Work Weeks in the city of Los Angeles. Commissioner, how are you? National Public Work Week is celebrated among tens and thousands of men and women in North America who provide and maintain the infrastructure and services collectively known as public works. It was instituted in 1960 as a public education campaign to call attention to the importance of public works in community life and seeks to enhance the prestige of the professionals who serve the public good every day with quiet dedication. National Public Works Week is observed each year during the third full week of May and seeks to raise the public's awareness of public works issues and to increase confidence in public works employees who are dedicated to improving the quality of life for present and future generations. And the city of Los Angeles Department of Public Works is the third largest department and is responsible for the construction, renovation, and operation of city facilities and infrastructure. And the department's five bureaus, Contract Administration, Engineering, Sanitation, Street Lighting, and Street Services, build the city's streets, install its sewers and public lights, and construct storm drains, public buildings, ride-a-waves, and service facilities. Our public works employees truly are unsung heroes of the city, isn't that right? Let's give all of our public works employees a round of applause for their dedication to our city. And yes, it's so easy to take them granted because we're so accustomed to the infrastructure and services they provide. Colleagues, I ask you to take a minute and imagine what Los Angeles would be like if our toilets didn't flush, our trash didn't get picked up, storm water did not run, did not drain to the ocean, or we had no streets, no sidewalks, no inspectors to oversee private contractors, no engineers to safely design public facilities, and no streetlights. Think that for a minute. Simply put, our public works infrastructures, infrastructure rather, and the employees that maintain it make Los Angeles livable. And as Chair of Public Works and Gain Reduction Committee and the entire City Council, I would like to say thank you to the entire public works family, including Kevin James, President of the Board of Public Works, Vice President, Commissioner Monica Garcia Rodriguez, that is, President Pro Tem, Commissioner Matt Zabo, Commissioner Mike Davis, and Commissioner Barbara Romero. Let's give our Commissioners a round of applause. I also want to highlight our directors within the Bureau, the Bureau of Street Services, Nazario Salceda, Intrum City Engineer Deborah Weintraub, as well as Gary Lee Moore, who's been leading our Port of Los Angeles, incredible work that he's doing in such a short time. Our Director of Bureau of Street Lighting, Ed Ibrahimian, oh my, I just butchered that. I'm sorry, I'm used to it. Ibrahimian. Inspector of Public Works, John Reamer, and the Director of Bureau of Sanitation, Enrique Carlos Zaldivar. So let's give them all a round of applause for their work in leading our public works department. And of course, most importantly, the men and women of the Department of Public Works who work tirelessly to make Los Angeles a great place to live, work, and visit. With that, Mr. President, I'll turn over to you.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody, especially want to thank Sanitation, Thursday's my collection day, and it's special, but all the work they do, everybody, street lighting, street services, and the great work that they do keeping our streets clean. And thank the Mayor for selecting very talented people to serve in the Board of Public Works, Mr. Garcetti. And John Reamer, you get up to the microphone right now.
Come on, John.
I want you to say a few words on behalf of the Bureau's Public Works.
Mr. President, I'm humbled to speak on behalf of this phenomenal department. What I can say is this is truly a family. The men and women in this Department of Public Works, they aim to serve. We hear of protect and serve, this department does that. Ours is to make sure that every day, we're ensuring that the citizens of this city receive what they should. Trees being trimmed, streets being paved, trash being picked up, as you already alluded to, everything that is needed for a quality time of life, and we thank you for this honor.
Thank you, John.
John, and Nazario, just take a second.
Come on up. Nazario, come on up.
He's in charge of potholes, everybody, give him a big hand.
Just want to take one minute to recognize the work of the men and women of Public Works. They are the real heroes, they are the ones actually providing the services to the residents of this great city, so I want to recognize every individual who every single day works very hard to provide services. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else you want to bring up?
Get Big Ed from Street Lighting.
Street Lighting Ed, come on up.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate this recognition. As Nazario mentioned, it goes a long way for all the staff that we have that go out in rain, in shine, in hot days, cold days, night, so appreciate it, thank you very much, and congratulations to entire Public Works family, thank you.
Right. Engineering. Engineering. All right.
And we got everybody.
Thank you, Ken Redd from the Bureau of Engineering. We are excited to be here and celebrate Public Works Week. Thank you for the recognition and the honor, and I would just like to thank the entire Public Works family, it truly is a family, as John said, we work well together to deliver the infrastructure for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary Lee Moore's representative, and also Deborah Weintraub, we got everybody there's.
We're gonna have Commissioner Monica Rodriguez represent the entire Board of Public Works Commission to say a few words.
Good morning, Councilmembers, thank you so much for recognizing the work of the Department of Public Works. We just want to remind the public that our meetings do occur every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at 9:30, and we encourage your participation. But more importantly, Councilmembers, we are here to be partners with you to ensure that the residents get all the services that they so deserve. And so we want to thank you for your continued support and your partnership, and we stand here to work with you always, thank you.
Right. So with that, colleagues, on behalf of the entire City Council, we want to recognize the Department of Public Works for their leadership and commitment. The theme this year is Building For Today, Planning For Tomorrow, which truly embodies the leadership in planning, building, and maintenance of infrastructure in the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations, we love you, we appreciate you.
Thank you, and other people, Mr. O'Farrell, real quick here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to rise and say that while on the office of my predecessor, I was the Public Works Deputy for the whole entire time, and it was in 2002 that it was explained to me what a truncated dome meant. And so since then, I've been cooking along, and Public Works looms large in the 13th District, as it does in all of the council districts, and I feel like I'm looking at my family here. And I just want to commend the Commissioners and Commission President Kevin James, and my friend and Council District 13 appointee Barbara Romero. It's a real pleasure to work with all of you, you're making a huge difference in the 13th, and I am your sort of, your brother here, and it's just so great to see you all, and I commend all of the great work that you do, keeping this city moving along quite well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Englander.
Yes, I have to stand and just thank all of you, you know, and particularly Joe knows, we always talk about the most important function we've got in the city is public safety, and that goes right with Public Works, it's taking care of our communities, picking up our trash or streets or sidewalks, trimming our trees, I mean, everything is so important, not just to the quality of life that we all deserve and expect throughout this community, and throughout the city, through every community. But you guys work tirelessly, you're always there on call, both the department and the Commissioners. And I think for the first time in a long time, I've really seen this collaborative effort come together with the department, the Commissioners, and working with all the council offices and all the districts and all the neighborhood councils, it's refreshing, there's a lot of attention to caring for and stretching the dollar to make it efficient, and make sure that we fix our streets and our potholes and our sidewalks, and these are the complaints we get each and every day. The things you do affect people much more, quite frankly, than, thank God, public safety. People don't call 911 every day for a police officer or firefighter, thank God, but they do call us every day because they're impacted and affected with the condition of our neighborhoods and making sure that those get taken care of. So you are by far the back-to-the-basics department that cares for us and works so well with us, so my hat's off to you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Englander, Mr. Buscaino, all the Public Works, let's give them a big hand. Public Works Week, we'll exit for a photograph if you would please, and at this time, I'm gonna call on the great President of the City Council, the great Councilman of the 10th District, Mr. Herb Wesson.
Good morning, Mr. President, members, it is my honor today to acknowledge a very, very special organization. In fact, Mr. Labange, Mr. President, back in 1854, when you and I were mere lads, okay, when we were just started, the Hebrew Benevolent Society became the very first charitable organization in the great city of Los Angeles. Almost 100 years later, they changed their name to the Jewish Family Service Organization that we've all come to know and to love. Today, we are celebrating the 160th year of the first group, the first organization that recognized the importance to give to those or to help those that couldn't help themselves. Could you please join me in giving them the round of applause that they deserve? Now, they do an outstanding job providing services to over 100,000 clients every year, regardless of age, your ethnic makeup, or your ability to pay. And as we go through this severe economic downturn, they didn't turn their back, they didn't run away from the challenge, they hung in there and were able to continue to provide the services that they have been providing for several lifetimes. Just to highlight a few of the things that they do, they have domestic violence shelters, they help the homeless, again, they help people of different ages, and what I wanted to do was to, and I think I consider myself an honorary member of this organization because they have allowed me to play a small role in assisting them over the years. They set an example that we would hope that all of our charitable organizations would follow. There are so many lives that have been turned around because of the phenomenal work that they do. Now, I don't know how they take 15 cent and turn it into a dollar, but they're an organization that knows how to get the most bang for their buck. Now, it is my pleasure to bring to the podium an individual who kind of set the stage for many of us. He was a young assembly person that we never, ever, ever had to worry about waking up in the morning and reading the paper and say, "Oh my God." He then was selected to become a judge, and now I'd like to present to you the President of the Jewish Family Service, and that's Terry Friedman, give him a round of applause. Judge Terry Friedman, Your Honor, where are you?
Thank you so much, Council President Wesson, thank you to the City Council. It is my privilege to serve as President of Jewish Family Service of Los Angeles. We are the oldest charity in the city of Los Angeles, and for 160 years, we have been serving the vulnerable in our community, regardless of race, regardless of background, regardless of religion, whoever needs help, we are there to provide it. With me here today are the JFS family, a couple of our past Presidents, Dina Schechter, Larry Rouch, our Chief Executive Officer, Paul Castro, and many of the board members and volunteers and staff that enabled Jewish Family Service to perform its work. At Jewish Family Service, our history really reflects the history and growth of the city of Los Angeles. You have embraced us for, since 1854, just a few years after California became a state. And what drove Jewish Family Service then, throughout the 19th century and the 20th century, is still true today. Our mission is to serve all those in need. There's a Hebrew expression, "Tikun Olam," it means to repair the world, and we take that to heart. It's not our work to simply repair the world of the Jewish community, but to repair the entire world. That is our mission, it has been our mission for 160 years. We provide a range of services to those in need, to victims of domestic violence, to those who are hungry, to older adults, to families. We are there with innovative, integrated services, and we are so appreciative of the partnership that we have with the city of Los Angeles, with this City Council, with the Mayor's Office, and with a whole number of departments with whom we partner to be able to provide our services. So thank you very much for this recognition today, thank you for partnering with us every day, and we look forward to working with you for at least another 160 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bloomingfield, you have on the queue.
Thank you, Mr. President, I wanted to join in and rise in strong support to celebrate this 160th birthday, a lot of friends, folks haven't worked with you for 160 years, but it's been a long time that we've worked together on issues, all of you here, and whether it's the food pantry in the Valley and some of the issues we had there, or another aspect of JFS that people don't realize is that when the cuts to the most vulnerable people were, had to take place in Sacramento, it was folks from JFS who came up when I was Budget Chair and worked with me to try to make those cuts have the least impact on the most vulnerable people. And I always knew when folks from JFS were coming up to talk about it, there was no other agenda than how do we help the most vulnerable people suffer the least in this crisis? And I always respected that and enjoyed working with you on those policy issues and on all of the great work that you do on a daily basis. So, "Tikun Olam" doesn't even begin to start it in terms of the work that you do, you really are repairing the world, and we're grateful for it, and congratulations on 160 years.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield, Mr. Wesson, as always, thank you, let's hear it for Jewish Family Services, give them a big hand.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I must add that you and I look very good to be 160 years old. With that said, I'd like to present this resolution signed by the entire council, if we could all scooch up close. If we could all scooch up close and get a good photo, show the world that we do, in fact, love each other. Again, congratulations. Thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Appreciate that. Now, Mr. Blumentfeld, for a very special presentation. Mr. Blumentfeld?
I want to call the council general, some of the folks from the IAC to come up, and some of my colleagues who wish to speak on this.
Mr. Blumentfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, 66 years ago this May, at the museum in Tel Aviv, David Ben-Gurion read aloud a Declaration of Independence that established a sovereign state of Israel in the Holy Land. In so doing, a dream deferred for more than two millennia was fulfilled as a Jewish state once again joined the community of nations for the first time since the Babylonians conquered Judea in the 6th century BCE. A democracy founded on principles enshrined in that declaration, complete equality of social and political rights to all inhabitants irrespective of religion, race, or sex, and guaranteed freedom of religion, conscious language, education, and culture. Those early Israelis set the stage for what Israel would ultimately become, a true startup nation, a nation that has made the desert bloom, forged a lasting peace with her neighbors, launched satellites, led the world in microprocessor and cellular technology, and even advised our own airports on security matters. What's more, Israel is a pluralistic society that recognizes and celebrates cultural diversity. It safeguards religious liberty, treats gay and lesbians with respect and dignity, and protects them against discrimination and hate crimes, and promotes education for men and women. The United States and Israel have forged an immediate and forceful bond in shared values and a shared worldview. That relationship has not only endured, but it has strengthened during these last 66 years. And Los Angeles has played center stage for much of that relationship. With one of the largest Jewish communities in the world, Los Angeles also plays host to one of the largest Israeli-American communities anywhere in the world. And I'm proud to represent much of that community in my district, and it's been an honor to have worked with so many Israeli-American people and that community for decades. For many years, prior to ever being elected to office, I was an aide to Congressman Berman, and I helped strengthen the Israel-US relationship when I staffed him on the Foreign Affairs Committee. In the State Assembly, I was able to work on several issues related to this, including divestment issues, several bills on divestment of Iran, but also a bill establishing an MOU between California and Israel on renewable energy research and development. And just this past March, it was my pleasure to be with Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu, as he and Governor Jerry Brown signed an MOU that will ensure that California and Israel share more than just a climate and a culture, but reputations as two of the most important centers for technology and innovation throughout the world. I'd like to now share a short video, courtesy of the Council General, celebrating 66 years of Israeli accomplishment. If we could roll that video. What a great video, ending up with Miss Israel USA 2013 on there. It's great. Just this past weekend, I joined many of my colleagues at the Celebrate Israel Festival, which is one of the largest Yom Ha'Amot celebrations anywhere outside of Israel. Some 20,000 people attended, and it had a lot to do with the hard work of men and women of the Israel-American Council. Based where else? Right here in Los Angeles. The mission of the Israel-American Council, or IAC, is to build an active and giving Israeli-American community throughout the United States in order to strengthen the state of Israel, our next generation, and to provide a bridge to the Jewish-American community. It's now my honor to introduce a great friend to this council, the Council General of the State of Israel in Los Angeles, to say a few words, David Siegel.
I want to thank all of you, city council, for this honor. We are here to mark the celebration of Israel's 66th year. We did it together at the park with almost 20,000 people, as was mentioned. And one of the symbols of that celebration was one of our greatest artists, Idan Raichel, who came in with Arabic singers, with Ethiopian singers, symbolizing Israel's multi-ethnic, multicultural, multiracial democracy that was so proud of. And like the United States, Israel is a democracy that is enshrined in our institutions and will continue working to perfect our society and to help, in the word Tikun Olam that you heard before, to help repair our lives, our communities, our region, and the world around us. We're very proud to be here today as one of the world's global innovation centers, one of the world's countries that helps most on humanitarian affairs around the world, including bringing in refugees from the Arab world to Israel for medical treatment, such as Syrian refugees these days. So it's a wonderful, wonderful celebration of Israel today and our partnership with the United States, and specifically with the state of California. The strategic agreement that we signed with the help of Councilmember Blumenthal and others, Blumentfeld and others, is critical to moving forward with technology on water, on agriculture, on climate change, on clean tech. And this is what we're committed to doing with our partners here locally and across the state of California. So thank you very much, and we'll see you again next year.
And thank you, Council General. Thank you. Good to see you again.
Now, if we could hear from some of our colleagues who are here. Start with Mitch Engler.
Thank you very much. And I'm proud not just to stand with these leaders for Israel, but to stand with Israel. 66 years is incredible. And you start thinking about what a short amount of time that is, and our lifetime, or some of ours, but that's a very short amount of time and how far they've come. It's truly incredible. It's one of the most unique experiences that I've ever had, and one of the best experiences of my life was actually going to Israel and learning how innovative and creative and brilliant, and where they've come from nothing, not just technologically, but environmentally, socially, academically. It's fascinating, and it's beyond comprehension until you actually see it and be there. And it's moving. It's quite a moving experience. My daughters, who I gave a choice on what depth they wanted to study Judaism, and when they left Israel, my youngest daughter, at that time, 11 years old, had taught herself Hebrew. She was so moved by the experience, put herself through becoming a bat mitzvah. My eldest daughter leaves next month on birthright to go back to Israel as well. And so I'm so proud that my family has engaged and stands with Israel as well. And I thank you, Mr. Blumentfeld, for bringing them here and standing with us as a people of Los Angeles that we have to constantly ensure and remind folks that it's important that all levels of government stand with Israel all the time. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Blumentfeld, and to our esteemed guests and our Council General for the opportunity to help celebrate this tremendous democracy that we call Israel. I think it was put very succinctly that there's a diversity in Israel that is tremendous, not just to the nation-state of Israel, but really to the ability for them to innovate. And it's been such a tremendous model for the world in terms of their leadership on innovation and what it means for us as we strive to solve some of the challenges that every country, every person, every nation-state faces. They've been such a leader that I want to point out a couple of things that I think are really important here to note. As early as 1967, they had already accomplished one out of every 20 households having used solar water heaters. They've been a tremendous leader in the field of renewable and solar energy. By the 1970s, oil crisis, Israel had developed solar technology that was being by a majority of the households in the region. In addition, in 2009, Israel's solar market grew more than any other country with nearly a 20-fold increase over 2008. And they, by then, had accomplished many, many megawatts of capacity. They now are running, not just as leaders, but they're running a very efficient, very smart grid. And I've often said and will continue to say that it's the leadership of countries like Israel that help us realize what it is to be prosperous. Energy, water is the cornerstone of a successful economy. And Israel, aside from its tremendous democracy, is demonstrating what that means as it results to innovation. So congratulations. Thank you for having an opportunity to speak here today.
Wise words from the Chair of the Energy and Environment Committee. Next, we have Mr. Joe Buscagno, who was just in Israel last year on a Jewish Federation trip.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Blumentfeld, and thank you to our Council General, Siegel, for being here, among other leaders in the Israeli community. I have been blessed with the opportunity to visit on a study trip with my colleagues, Mr. Bon and Mr. Karats, a study trip that was sponsored by the Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles. And the trip was intended, the intended goal of the trip was to give policymakers a chance to visit this thriving nation, a place at the crossroads of the ancient world and the cunning edge of modern technology, a home of three of the world's major religions, a place of great promise and great suffering, but bristling with the promise of a better tomorrow. Also had an opportunity to visit the Port of Haifa, where I saw so many similarities between the Port of Los Angeles and the Port of Haifa, how the importance of moving goods through a country impacts the economic development opportunities and job creation in one country. This trip has been truly life-altering experience for me, and I would have traded for the world. Israel is a vibrant nation, a mix of the very old and the very new, from the sacred ancient streets of Jerusalem, where we saw at the time we were visiting in this past winter, a snowfall on Jerusalem, which was an incredible sight, an amazing sight, to the 21st century hub of Tel Aviv. Israel had it all. And I'm grateful for this opportunity to take the study trip, and the memories will stay true and last forever, and I hold a deep place in my heart for Israel. Thank you.
Bob, I do have Mr. Weezer in the queue, if that...
Sure.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and welcome to our Council General here to these chambers. You're no stranger to these chambers, a good friend of the city of Los Angeles, and to the leaders of the Jewish community, not the others who continue to do so much here in Los Angeles for the Jewish community. I had the honor of representing Boa Heights, which was once the largest concentration of Jews west of the Mississippi. But it's great to see that we continue to embrace that history, whether we are preserving shuls, where once thriving places for people to congregate, or preserve some of the other buildings where people congregated at one time to either worship or get together and help one another. It's great to see that although we are now majority Latino, we embrace our Jewish history in the community of Boa Heights, and we will continue to do so. And when I visited Israel, one of my biggest takeaways was despite being surrounded literally by millions of enemies, it is one of the leaders in many fields like agriculture, the tech industry, and it was just great to see that. It's also great to see that having some of the major religions call Israel home, the respect is still there for each and every one of those other religions, and that was great to see as well. Here in Los Angeles, we have a lot more work to do. We are one of the most diverse cities in the world, and seeing what Israel has done too, to embrace that diversity, I think Los Angeles and Israel have a lot in common, and we have our future bound together as we go forward. Thank you very much for being here today.
So we have some folks here from the IAC, from the Israeli-American Council, and I wanted to bring them up, Sean, Nadi, other board members, to commemorate the great work that they did in celebrating Israel's 66th birthday this year. They had the celebration of Yom Ha'Amot. On behalf of the entire city, I wanted to give them this certificate and have my colleagues come up and give it to you and then give you a chance to say a few words. But they put together such an amazing celebration festival. It was enjoyed by the whole community, and it really was a great tribute, and we're very grateful that you were able to do that and put that together. So please accept this certificate.
Councilmembers, on behalf of the whole Israeli-American community and the Jewish-American community in Los Angeles and around the country, I want to thank you for your support. I would like to recognize the board members here and the staff that's here with us that do a lot of the work every day. And thanks for joining us last weekend at the park and celebrating Israel with 20,000 people and showing the people of Israel that we stand with them. That means a lot for them. There are many things that we have to be proud of in the IAC. First, we are proud that the IAC started seven years ago here in Los Angeles, and a city that welcomes immigrants from all across the world. We are proud to contribute back to the community that we live in, and we are proud to live in a city that understands and supports the miracle called Israel. The IAC is now in six cities, but as I said, the headquarters is here and will remain in Los Angeles, which we are very proud of. Los Angeles is home to over 200,000 Israeli-Americans, the largest Israeli-American community outside of Israel, and we are honored and proud to be part of this great city by helping build, invent, heal, manufacture, lead, educate, just to name a few. As an officer in the Israeli army, I learned what brotherhood is. And when I came here, right after my military service, I learned that there is brotherhood outside of the military. And we thank you for your brotherhood throughout the year and for your steadfast support to the state of Israel and its people. So thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you very much for giving us this honor. Want to share with you a quick thing. Having this idea, coming up with the resources to carry it out, was one thing. But the political process stood between us and making that a reality. We had to overcome a very powerful neighborhood council in the 5th district. Without their support, we would not have this celebration. I hear all this amber alert. It's very appropriate. I choose to see that as a sign of honor. I choose to see that as a sign of honor. We came in front of them, and an Irish Catholic woman told me, "Why Israel?" And I said, "Why not?" She said, "I'm Irish Catholic. Why not St. Patrick's Day?" I said, "If you have a festival for Irish Catholics, I'll be the first one to attend, and you can attend this." I told her... It was very auspicious, but we happened to have come right after who? No other than the Jewish Family Service, who I happen to be a supporter of, who was, today we're honored. The same Jewish Family Service representative told the council that although the name is Jewish, 90% who receive the benefit are non-Jews. So, I said, "The park is a place where we come together. We highlight our backgrounds. We are all very proud patriotic Americans, but we're also proud of our heritage. We come together, we crawl out of our houses, and this green belt of a park is where we come together. That's where we carry our vision of what Los Angeles is all about." We had a vote. The vote was unanimous, and since then, I dare say, it will have become a tradition that we're going to come back in the park. That woman was the first one to enter the gates, and she's been coming every year ever since. Thank you very much, again.
Now, thank, now, thank, thank, thank you, and Mr. Blumenfeld, just, in fact, I'll let you, I want to, if I may, we have all received Amber Alerts, and I just want to say that it's a 2004 Orange Nissan Quest, license number 7CIN189. 7CIN189, 2004 Orange Nissan Quest. Sorry, Mr. Blumenfeld.
Just wanted to close this wonderful celebration. We talked about the great technology, but just to say, happy birthday, Israel. I'm Israel Hi. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Thank you so very much. You know, Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Why don't we run through the agenda quickly if we could? Call or roll? Mr. Weezer, you'll be next. Call or roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonn, Buscano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Karats, Coria, Labanche, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Weston, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Weezer moves. Sadio seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
O'Farrell moves. Martinez seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there are technical corrections to be noted for today's agenda. For item 12, recommendation number one, the bond issuance is to be by the California Statewide Community Development Authority, not the California Municipal Finance Authority. And for item 21, the prior council action date is January 14, 2014, not June 14, 2014. Further, the Department of Building and Safety requests that item 1Q be continued to May 30, 2014, and that 1F be continued to June 6, 2013. And lastly, that the following items should be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid. Those would be items 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1J, 1L, excuse me, not 1L, 1M, and 1O.
So, without objection, that'll be the order? Continue.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 12 are items noticed for public hearing.
Cards? Cards on the item?
Mr. President, we have a card on item 12, and I believe Mr. Buscano had wanted to call item 4 special.
So, why don't we do that? Hold those two items? Let's prepare to...
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. We do have a card on item 1 as well.
Okay, let's hold that as well. Let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, now that brings us where?
Mr. President, that items 13 through 16 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials members, I do not see any, so let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Now, we're, it continues...
Mr. President, that brings us to items 17 through 22. They're items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Ms. Martinez? I did not hear you. I did not hear...
18.
18, special for Ms. Martinez?
And, Mr. President, if I may, we do have cards on all of those items.
Okay, so then we will hold those items? That then brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council back to presentations.
Mr. Weezer. So, we now like to defer to Mr. Weezer for a very important presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, we were up here not too long ago congratulating our new permanent general manager for the Department of Building and Safety, Raymond Chan. And just a few weeks ago, we got word that our very own interim general manager at the time, Raymond Chan, had been awarded a very prestigious award by his colleagues called the Building Official Award from the California Building Officials Organization. So, we have two reasons to celebrate today. One is that he is now our permanent general manager, but originally, when we planned for this recognition of Raymond Chan, it was to recognize him for this very prestigious award that he received. And I thought it'd be fitting to, at this time, give a little bit about Raymond's background, because indeed, we have a jewel amongst us in terms of getting things done as we move forward to provide great customer service, and also to assist the economic development activity that is happening throughout the city with all the new buildings and development going on. Raymond began his career with the city as a structural designer for the Department of Water and Power back in 1984. And for the record, I was a junior in high school at that time. He later moved to the Department of Building and Safety in 1987, where he held various management positions, including supervisor and chief of plan checks, director of the case management division, assistant chief and chief of engineering bureau, executive officer, and then interim general manager of the Department of Building and Safety, as I mentioned. Raymond has always fulfilled his role above and beyond expectations, succeeding in every position he has held. His dedication and commitment are deserving of recognition, and that's why we are celebrating today, not only his colleagues in the state acknowledging his work, but also we as a city are acknowledging his work as well. He embodies leadership, constantly striving for the best while using innovative and collaborative team-building techniques, and he oversees a bureau system that, get this, it has over 900 employees and $110 million budget. Now, to manage all that is quite a feat, but he does it with efficiency. He is also responsible for initiating and implementing over 60 enhancement programs. 20 of those programs have received the productivity award from the city's very own Quality and Productivity Commission. And these programs include the Restaurant and Hospitality Express Program, the Peril Design Permitting Program, the Construction Inspection Partnership Program, the Development Services Case Management Program. And one of the things that has, the reasons why we see so much new, many more residents happening in downtown LA, where 10 years ago, we only had about 10,000 residents, and today we have 50,000, is because of the Adaptive Reuse Program that Raymond was involved with with others to ensure that the permitting and conversions of more historical buildings for the purposes of people living in them. And thank you, Raymond, for that. And recently, we adopted our Adaptive Reuse Ordinance for Commercial Productives on Broadway, on the Broadway Historic Theater, which Raymond was very supportive of us doing. I think we're going to have the same results there as well. So, we are very happy with the work Raymond has done, a stellar, a stellar career. But more importantly, more than anything, when you, when I talk to people wanting to invest in the city of Los Angeles, wanting to ensure that there is some certainty that their applications for permitting will result in good results from their investment, and everything that is happening in downtown right now with billions of dollars being invested, I often hear the name of Raymond Chan come up, because this person who becomes a face for the city in many of those discussions often gives them the certainty and credibility they're looking for to move forward with their projects. And I can't thank Raymond enough for doing a wonderful job as we see this renaissance in downtown LA, but I know that his department is just as responsive throughout the rest of the city. And that's why we're here today, to congratulate him on being the 2013-2014 Building Official from the California Building Officials Organization, and to congratulate him once again for being our permanent Building and Safety Director.
Congratulations, Ray. Congratulations to you and your entire staff. So, staff, you should be giving yourselves a round of applause. They are phenomenal department.
First of all, thank you very much, Councilmember Weezer, for the kind words, and good morning, Council President and Councilmembers. Ray Chan Building and Safety, thank you very much for recognizing this award. Actually, this award is earned by the men and women of the Department of Building and Safety family. Our employees, whether engineers, inspectors, clerk typists, analysts, support staff, whoever, they really have been working very hard to improve our customer service. Often, they work above and beyond the call of duty. Many times, they work through lunches, they work through breaks, so that just to reduce the waiting time at a counter. And many times, they work through their working hours to wrap up the business with the customers so customers don't have to come back. And that is why LEDBS has been able to serve 97% of our 400,000 walking customers within 30 minutes. At the same time, we're able to inspect 97% of our 750,000 inspection within 24 hours from the time they will request. Now, I cannot speak enough about the good things of our employees, and I want to report to council that some of the customers feel the same way. With me right here is a binder that we call the BRAC book. These are the letters and emails that we receive from our customers to show appreciation of over 200 of our employees within two-year period of time. And many of the employees, they receive multiple recognitions. I just want to let you know that LEDBS employees, they are really great city employees, and some of them are here today. And Council President, with your permission, I would like to have them rise just to greet with council. Is that okay? Okay. All right. With that said, okay, LEDBS staff, will you please stand up and wave to the council? Thank you. I also want to take an opportunity to introduce our senior management team to the council really quickly. On my left side, come on here, is Dr. Eva Keshafi.
Good morning.
Dr. Keshafi is responsible for 140,000 permits issued every year, and at the same time, she is also the president of the LA City, of the LA, actually, is the whole LA Tall Building Structural Design Council. Thank you, Eva. And on my right-hand side right here is Mr. Frank Bush. Mr. Frank Bush? Mr. Frank Bush is recognized by many council members as the most responsive employee in the city. And at the same time, Mr. Frank Bush also has achieved 100% cost recovery for the general fund co-enforcement function for the direct cost. And there's the highest in United States, and that is no close second. Thank you, Frank. I also want to thank, you know, Mr. Steve Anglai. Steve, I just hate to stand next to him. And Mr. Anglai is the former treasurer of the city, and he has been continuously improving the fiscal health of our department, and thank you so much, Steve.
Thank you.
One of our senior managers, Bob Steinbach, who is the chief of the inspection bureau in charge of the 750,000 inspection every year, he cannot be here today, but on behalf of him, we got Assistant Bureau Chief Larry Gouston right here.
Good morning, everybody.
The last but not least is Mr. Lincoln Lee. Lincoln, come on over here. Okay. Lincoln is the chief of the, Lincoln is the chief of the Development Service Case Management, is being well-recognized by the development industry that he is the best problem solver in the city. Thank you, Lincoln.
Thank you.
Lastly, I just want to thank council for your support, for your long-term support, and also for your recognition for this award. And your support and recognition really validates the hard work and the good work of our department staff, and also inspires us to continue to improve our customer service so development projects can be built safe, built well, and built fast. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And Ray, don't forget your black book, otherwise you wouldn't know what work you're going to have to do this next year. And thank you very much. As you see, Ray brought in the whole team. He recognizes as a true leader that it's really a team effort, and it's great to see the faces of our departments that lead these efforts. We often work with them day in and day out, but to have them here in chambers, for them to see some of the people doing this work day in and day out, it's a great thing to see as well. So, Raymond recognizes that he not only got this award from his colleagues in the state, but also it was really to the building department and safety for the city of Los Angeles as well. Congratulations to you all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. And Mr. Fuentes? As Mr. Weezer moves to the back of the room, Mr. Fuentes, and as Mr. Fuentes is moving to the center aisle, if we could, Mr. Clerk, take up item 4. It was held by a member, I believe, and those questions have been answered?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so on that, on that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Mr. Fuentes, please.
Good morning. Thank you, colleagues. May is CalFresh Awareness Month, and we know, we all know, that household hunger negatively impacts the intellectual, physical, emotional development of children and puts them at a greater risk when we, for obesity and diabetes and other diseases when they're not properly nourished. CalFresh is a critical program that provides nutrition, much-needed nutrition, to many of California and certainly Los Angeles's family. This program helps increase household budgets for food. It also allows families to put healthy and nutritious food on the table. However, by some estimates, only half of those that are eligible for CalFresh are actually in the program. When I had the opportunity to serve this great state in the legislature, we worked on legislation to try to improve the rates of participation in CalFresh. And there's two reasons why that is so incredibly important. The first I mentioned is that we need to make sure that families, in particular children, are properly nourished. We know, study after study, that 0 to 5 is a critical age for our young people to develop how we need them to. But equally important, we all pay for this program. Our taxes, our tax dollar goes to the federal government, and only 50% is coming back to provide the nutrition and the food that families that are the most vulnerable that they need. And so, it's important for us to figure out how it is that we increase participation in this program. How we're doing it, colleagues, is that the city of Los Angeles, through its Family Source Center program, partnering with LAUSD and the Department of Aging, as well as the Housing and Community Investment Department, we are working together to help eligible Angelinos participate in CalFresh. And we're doing that by helping them with the application process. Mr. Blumenfeld and some of my colleagues who served in the legislature helped streamline that process through AB 6, a bill that I authored. But we're doing that on the ground, and we're making sure that families get that critical nutritional resource, food security, that they so desperately... they so desperately need. As a city, we can do more, though. As I mentioned, these are our tax dollars that are not coming back to us. It's money that we've already paid that we need to make sure that we continue to get to those folks who need it. With me today, we've got some people that I'd like for you to hear from, who are doing the work to make sure that we're doing the best that we can. With me today is Yolanda Anguiano with the California Food Policy Advocates, formerly with Assembly District 39 and a tremendous resident of Mission Hills. Jessica Jones Greenholt with the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank, Josep Perez, Angelo Salazar, James Bolden, and Carlos Portillo with the Los Angeles County Department of Public Social Services, and Claire Fox with the Food Policy Project, and many, many more people. But these four folks are going to speak to you very briefly about what it is that they're doing. Yolanda.
Thank you, councilmember. As the councilmember said, there's various action steps that you all can take, and they're very simple steps, as in help identify those community-based organizations that already help families enroll to CalFresh. You could put a banner on your website that better connects to the online portal to apply for CalFresh benefits as well. Please use the CBOs that are part of the CalFresh partnership with the Department of Public Social Services to better connect to resources, use us as that resource. And speaking next, I wanted to introduce Jessie Jones Greenholt from the L.A. Regional Food Bank.
Hi, I'm with the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank. I just wanted to briefly mention that we serve all of Los Angeles County. We served over 60 million pounds of food last year, and we each have a role to play in addressing hunger in Los Angeles. Whether you're on the city council, whether you're working with a nonprofit, whether you're with the Department of Public Social Services, we all have a role that's very important. And if that role isn't played, we won't make the progress that we know we need to make. So thank you very much for recognizing this as an important issue today and playing your role. Thanks.
Good morning, city councils. Excuse me. On behalf of the County of Los Angeles and its Department of Public Social Services, I want to say thank you for giving us this opportunity to share with you what the County of Los Angeles is doing to alleviate food insecurity and help feed families. As Councilmember Fuentes mentioned, we need, we have a lot of work to do in terms of getting, making sure that hungry families are receiving the resources they deserve and they need. Part of our effort is this May CalFresh Awareness Month, and we're really appreciative of the city of Los Angeles being part of this effort. We have over a million individuals that receive CalFresh benefits, and half a million, half a million of them are here in the city of Los Angeles, but that's not enough. And unfortunately, or fortunately, we cannot do this alone. The wonderful partnership we have with over 40 community-based organizations is part of the reason why we're doing better. Part of the reason why we're doing better is cities like the great city of Los Angeles and other cities in the county that are spreading the word about CalFresh awareness and the value it brings to help families transition into self-sufficiency. We have a number of district offices available, but we also have an online presence. Self-service is what we're pushing for, but we're also out in the community. Just in the month of May alone, we have over 140 community events out there. We also have contracts with community-based organizations to help us run through the applications and help us with our work. We're at food markets, food markets, we're at health centers, but again, the online presence makes it, makes us available 24/7. We all know someone in our lives that needs this help. It could be family members, it could be friends, it could be the busboy at our favorite restaurant. Please help us get the word out to make sure that we can help them so they can progress towards that road, towards self-sufficiency. Thank you again.
No, thank you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to thank you guys all for recognizing us. I'm with Maternal and Child Health Access. My name is Marcela Marquez, and a lot of what we do is we assist families with CalFresh enrollment, and we also do medical assistance. We would just like to take this opportunity to encourage you all to seek the assistance of CBOs and FBOs with CalFresh enrollment to increase food security for a lot of the homeless families and families with low income and children who are in need of food assistance. We also... Oh, I'm so sorry.
Don't be. Take your time.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We also just want to recognize that we are now also providing services at the Historic General Hospital with the Wellness Center. So anybody who is in the area of Boyle Heights can also come to get services with us for CalFresh enrollment and medical enrollment. Thank you very much.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Claire Fox. I'm with the L.A. Food Policy Council. I want to really thank the leadership of the councilmembers here for lifting up the importance of CalFresh. And just to locate CalFresh in a community economic development context, every dollar of CalFresh expended, CalFresh benefits expended generates an additional $1.79 in local economic activity. And what we're seeing more and more is the promotion of CalFresh connected to farmers' markets, corner store conversions, and new healthy food retail. So this is, it's not only important for the health and wellness of our communities, but also for our local economy. And if we had full participation here in L.A. County, that would generate 1.47 billion in economic activity. So I just wanted to lift up the importance of that and thank all of you for continuing to partner with the county, state, and federal governments to make sure that all those families that need CalFresh benefits are getting them. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Mr. President, the champion here in Los Angeles, our Chair of the Arts Parks Health Committee, Mitchell O'Farrell.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Fuentes. I'm one of the many champions standing here today, and thank you so much for inviting me up here. As we've heard, there are up to 500,000 city residents who could be eligible for this program and yet aren't participating. Half of which, that's 250,000 households in the city of Los Angeles currently do receive CalFresh benefits, assisting the thousands of Los Angeles residents with putting nutritious food on our tables. In 2011, our colleague Felipe Fuentes introduced AB6, which cut the administrative red tape for access, drew down billions of federal dollars, and provided a utility benefit for uses of the program. And I'm so proud to be standing here with Felipe and with Bob, who was a sponsor of that bill, and I think they deserve a big round of applause for making this possible. Improving fresh food options across the city of Los Angeles is critical for the health and vitality of our families across the city. I am so proud that we have seven farmers' markets in the 13th District with a recently expanded presence at the market in Echo Park, which I helped make happen, and we brought it to Sunset Boulevard, and they doubled their sales in just one event because of the visibility. And last week, we opened a new farmer's market in Glassell Park. My office has contributed funding for many of these markets, will continue to do so. They're providing my constituents in low-income areas with fresh, healthy food options. Everyone, no matter who you are, where you live, deserves access to fresh, healthy food. Farmers' markets are great for your health, they're great for our local business owners, they're wonderful for our economy, and they are great for our city of angels. Thank you so much, and congratulations to everyone who is administering the CalFresh program here in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. And Bob Blumenfield, it has to be really noted, as Chair of the Budget in the California State Assembly was just critical in making sure that we got these necessary reforms so that we can increase our take rate. Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fuentes, but I appreciate the praise, but really, it was Felipe Fuentes who was a leader with his bill, AB6. I was proud to co-author it, but he was the person who pushed it through. This, and I appreciate you doing that, but also bringing us together for CalFresh Awareness Month. It is such an important opportunity to remind people of the fact that CalFresh is out there. Think about it, there are, as we mentioned, half a million people who could be eligible for CalFresh but aren't taking advantage of that. That not only means if we get them eligible, that they can become self-sufficient, but when you complain about California, Los Angeles not getting enough federal funds, well, this is a way to get more federal funds. Go out, find someone who you think might be eligible, encourage them to apply. Not only will help them and their family, it will be more, bring more money to the region from the federal government, equalizing things in that respect, and it will drive our economy, and it's, it's good for the individuals, and I'm just proud to be here with, with all of you celebrating CalFresh Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And just to recap, colleagues, it's nutritionally necessary that CalFresh be successful. It's about our fair share because we're only getting about 50% of what we're investing in our tax dollar, and it is a pathway to economic development for Los Angeles and California. Thank you very much. Give these great folks a round of applause for their hard work. Can we take a photo?
Again, thank you, Mr. Fuentes, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Blumenfield. Thank all of you. Mr. Englander?
Mr. President, I'll move that we reconsider item number one, if we could. Council file.
Let's, let's vote on, are you, do you more? Just one item?
Uh, just one item. The council file number is 140610S51 from the meeting that was on Tuesday, May 20th. I'd like to reconsider that and hold it again for another 30 days.
My mistake, Mr. Englander. Let's vote on... Okay, so I'm told we need two votes. One is reconsideration, so let's do that first. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the, tabulate the vote. And now we need to vote, Mr. Clerk, to...
Continue the matter to June 24, sir.
Okay. Can we just do without objection?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council back to items called special.
Why don't we go into the... No. Mr., where's Mr. Blumenfield? You wanted to, was it? Want to, want to do item 19?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're going to go to item 19 for Mr. Blumenfield.
Shall I call him up then? Yeah.
We do have cards, Mr. Blumenfield.
We'll do the cards after, if that's okay.
Okay, we'll do them afterwards. You go right ahead.
We have some speakers.
No, you're, go to the desk.
And as well. Great. Thank you, Mr. President. I introduce this motion to celebrate and strengthen the relationship between the city of Los Angeles and the state of Israel. I want to thank my colleagues, councilmembers Felipe Fuentes, Joe Busciano for seconding this because of their respective roles as Chairs of the Energy and Environment Committee and the Public Works Committee, respectively, that they will be part of this. I also want to thank Councilmember Tom Labange for seconding this because of his leadership on the Sister City programs. That is also part of this. What this motion does is it builds on the recently signed MOU between California and the state of Israel. As we've talked about already, California and Israel share more than just a climate and a culture. We're two of the most prolific hubs of technology, innovation, environmental sustainability, infrastructure around the entire world. And passing this motion will develop these efforts and continue to work closely for our mutual benefit. I joined Governor Jerry Brown recently as he signed the state of, the state MOU with Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu in Mountain View this past March. That MOU grew out of a 2009 bill, which I had wrote while I was in the State Assembly, that directed the state to create a similar MOU that focused more on clean tech and green tech exchanges. Building on that work today, I ask my colleagues to support the establishment of the Los Angeles E.L.A.T. Innovation and Cooperative Cooperation Task Force. The task force takes our 55-year-old Sister City relationship with E.L.A.T. and will foster technology investment, business development, and research investments in clean technology, water resources, solar energy, and all sorts of innovation between Israeli companies, Southern California businesses, and it's, and the education community, nonprofit communities, and the city of Los Angeles. At this time, what I'd like to do is invite several guests to the table, the Consul General of Israel, David Siegel, Dr. Glenn Yago, who's the Senior Director of the Milken Institute, and Lee Wallach, who's the founder of Faith to Green. If the three of you could come to the table, they're going to speak directly to the importance, there are witnesses to speak directly to the importance of this task force.
That's fine. Welcome.
Start with the Consul General.
Well, thank, thank you very much. Again, it's an honor to be here and discuss these very exciting opportunities that we have before us. Israel and California are both global innovation hubs when it comes to technology, clean tech, and issues that relate to the fundamentals of life, healthcare, food security, water, the environment. So for those reasons, we were fortunate to work together, to sign an agreement between the state of California and the state of Israel, and we're now looking at Los Angeles as one of the first opportunities to begin implementing this bilateral MOU. And I'm very thankful to the city councilmembers, and especially, again, to Bob Blumenfield and Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Busciano, and, and, and Mr. Labange for their leadership on this, as well as the entire city council. We're very proud of the 55-year Sister City partnership between Los Angeles and E.L.A.T., our desert city to Israel's south. Both our cities and both our countries share many things in common, and this motion is an opportunity to further strengthen our cooperation between Los Angeles and Israel. Through this task force, we believe that we'll be able to quickly identify opportunities where Israel and Los Angeles can partner and assist each other on emergency issues like water recycling and conservation, renewable energy, and climate change. Israel today is one of the global leaders in water technologies. We recycle almost 90% of all our water. We have technologies that have to do with regeneration, conservation, drip irrigation, of course, that is well familiar in this part of the country, and underground facilities for IT where you monitor water grids, prevent leaks, and save water in many, many different ways. In view of the emergency drought in California, we believe that the time is now to begin implementing this, and this is why we're so happy to be here today. There's much that we need to learn from each other, and we already have major technology presence in California, such as BrightSource in the Mojave Desert, which is the world's largest solar power plant, which is now operational here in California, and another Israeli company, IDE, which is one of the largest desalination plants in the world, which is now working on the largest desalination plant in the Western Hemisphere, north of San Diego. We have very interesting technologies that relate to water, to smart electrical grids, and other forms of technology that are uniquely pertinent to Los Angeles needs. So for all these reasons, we're very excited to be here today, to work with all of you, to find ways to implement the state-to-state MOU, and begin getting to the work of improving the community here and, and sharing technologies together. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Consul General. Next, we're going to hear from Dr. Glenn Yago, who's the Senior Director of the Milken Institute, and we really appreciate you being here as well.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your initiative and for, congratulations to the city of Los Angeles and the city council for these first concrete steps in realizing that agreement that was signed in Mountain View. It's, it's an agreement that can really define what the partnership is and takes the first step in defining that partnership between California's innovative state of mind and Israel as, as the innovation nation. The efforts as outlined in this motion are going to encourage the many steps to create a bilateral launchpad for global solutions to local and regional problems that deploy technology development, business development, educational and research opportunities in clean tech, water resources, solar energy, and a variety of other environmental technologies. The policies and programs that can emerge from this initiative will positively answer the question about how these two major innovation hubs can work together to unite successfully to address the major global threats on a local basis that, that exist in terms of economic growth and security and health, and food, water, energy, and other areas. What we need to do now is to start immediately on setting up a set of emergency innovations that can be implemented on a fixed timetable, important partnership with California utilities, water utilities, technology companies, agriculture, and regions. These are key hubs for implementation efforts which have measurable objectives that could be accomplished, including a quantitative increase in water recycling, water and management technologies, aquifer remediation, and achieve Israeli levels of performance in, in water supply and distribution. There's a lot of similarities between Israel and California, but there's one major difference as well. The average Israeli residential water consumption is a third of California's, and it's one quarter of the total water consumption on a per capita basis. In order to overcome that, is, is we'll create the basis of technologies and new advantages that can be broadcast and be launchpads for global solutions as well between Californian Israeli companies and localities to serve as delivery mechanisms for these global solutions and solve these global threats in the key areas where natural resources are precious and scarce. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And last witness, we want to hear from, from Lee Wallach, who is the founder of Faith to Green, is also the person who originally brought me the, the idea of doing an MOU with California and Israel. And in fact, when we were traveling in Israel together was when then-Governor Schwarzenegger signed the original letter of intent to try to move forward with this, and it's been a long process. So, Mr. Wallach.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, councilmembers. It's good to be here. It's... Thank you, Bob. Thank you, council members. It's good to be here. It's no coincidence that we were just here talking about Earth Day just a short time ago. And this is another step in the right direction for our city of Los Angeles. I'll apologize for my voice today. For over 15 years, Faith to Green, formerly Coalition on the Environment and Jewish Life, has been working in this environmental area, helping to bring Israeli companies here, but also helping to bring trips such as the one that Councilman Bloomingfield and I were on, and other senators, other council members, going, meeting with companies, kicking the tires, spending time with new green and clean tech companies to find out not only a little bit about their technology, but how we can get them to move here. No country is home to more innovation than Israel. Israel is third only to the U.S. and China on NASDAQ, second to the U.S. in venture capital. For a little country like this, this is amazing. Since Israel has... I like to say, since Israel has not had resources bubbling out from the ground, it bubbles out from between their ears. For over 20 years, we have had Israeli innovation here in the largest solar plant, not just our new innovations that are out in the desert with BrightSource, but older... For over 20 years, we've had large-scale solar, 350 megawatts of trough. That was all Israeli technology. Now is the time to really recognize not only history, but what we can do moving forward. When we go to Israel on our trips, we go to E.L.A.T. We visit the prestigious E.L.A.T. Conference on Renewal Energy. We work hard on that trip. We have met with the mayor of E.L.A.T. on a number of occasions. He recognizes that our organization is responsible for over $3 billion in hard contracts for Israeli companies. That's hard dollars, folks. This city-sister partnership is critical, and not just because we love Tom Labonge and the fact that the Sister City pole down the street, if you look at it, what's at the top? E.L.A.T. Okay, but there's a lot we can do to strengthen that relationship. The mayor of E.L.A.T., Mayor Halevi, would like to see E.L.A.T. more. There's more we can do. We didn't do enough in the past administration. We've also met with Mr. Gao, head of the Sister City programs, Mr. Alon, head of their environmental unit. We have a lot in common with E.L.A.T., our sister city. E.L.A.T. is home to the majority of the world's technology in solar. They have an airport, and a port, and an amazing coastline with tourists, just like we do here. We've met with... And actually, we stay regularly with the owner of Arca Airlines and the head of the port. We would like to see more happening between our two cities. This is the right time to do this, and again, I thank Bob and this council for moving this in the right direction.
There are a couple of speakers on the queue, or how do you want me to proceed?
That would be perfect, Mr. President, to do the public comment.
Okay, well, I have a couple other members. So let me call on Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bloomingfield, thank you so much for your leadership in creating this task force and for including me as well, and look forward to serving on this task force with you, Mr. Fuentes, to find the mutual benefits and try to share our success stories, our challenges between our respective cities. In my recent trip to Israel, I saw clearly how the entire country is developing. I saw the construction cranes soar over various parts of Israel, the projects specifically planned in E.L.A.T. looked at the University Research Center, high-speed rail, new airport in this part of Israel. As we've heard even more so in the presentation earlier, how Israel is a thriving nation, home to a culture sacred to three of five major religions, while still being a center of major technological development. I also visited during my recent trip the Google headquarters in Tel Aviv, which was this incredible opportunity to see the number of startup companies there, these folks together collectively working on these startup companies was just incredible. I look forward to this partnership and driving some of these ideas and how to improve E.L.A.'s infrastructure challenges. And I again want to commend Mr. Bloomingfield for kicking off this task force. And this is exactly why Sister Cities... We need to encourage other Sister City relationships to do what we're doing here, and this is why Sister Cities exist within our respective countries. Thank you.
Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Labonge would be so proud. Before he left, he made sure that I said, you know, saluted our Sister City, E.L.A.T. in Israel, celebrating our relationship with them. I want to thank Mr. Bloomingfield for bringing this forward. This is, you know, to underscore what Mr. Buscagno said, so, so important for us to do as we all are grappling with how to be more smart about our conservation, sustainability, resilience. It's this type of partnership that gives us the ability to test those theories and exchange those ideas. And I'm glad, Mr. Buscagno, that you mentioned infrastructure. This is a tremendous opportunity for all of us to learn from one another, because the name of the game these days is to be innovative and to understand how it is that we get more bang for our buck. And that often means that we have to be smarter, we have to innovate, and we have to collaborate. And so this task force, I think, affords us that opportunity. And so it's very, very exciting. It's a strategic partnership between you all and us and the city of Los Angeles, and we're primed for that success. The city has done tremendous efforts already to begin to really want to foster this type of innovation, whether it's the incubator, whether it's strategic alliances like this. It gives us and affords us the opportunity to be successful. So I'm very excited about the leadership that you've all demonstrated, and certainly, Mr. Bloomingfield, thank you for bringing this forward.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President, to our guests, our friends. Welcome. I too am excited about this task force. I look forward to serving on it as well. And you know, I've been a longtime supporter of the Sister City program. In fact, had a hand in establishing a couple. And this is exactly the other side of the Sister City program that is always talked about, but frequently is not activated. And that's the business, the trade. You know, it's more than just culture and education information. It's establishing relationships, business relationships, commerce, and encouraging innovation back and forth. And so I'm happy to support this effort, appreciate the leadership of my colleague Bloomingfield to make, to bring this forward. And I would invite you and encourage you. I know as we talk about business opportunities, you know, it's important not just the transfer of technology, Israeli technology here, but also opportunities to do business back and forth, to establish trading relationships with goods and services, and especially with small emerging businesses frequently that are left out, but that have some things to offer. And so we look forward to at least establishing opportunities to engage larger, small, and sometimes even micro businesses in that discussion so that they can benefit from the ideas, suggestion, the collaboration, and potential partnerships to really encourage full relationships between our two cities. So I look forward to joining you.
Okay, now we're gonna have general public comment, not general public comment, but public comment on this item. It will be one minute, starting with Brian Barajas and Antonio Ramirez and John Walsh.
Well, hope the task force might be interested. I turned in this title, "Expanding Nowapa Weather Modification to Stop Starvation." The other one, "Who Stole Fire from Mankind: The Suppression of Fusion." Now, in these two documents, it's simple. You focus on technologies, weather modification, ionization. This has been going on in Mexico, Australia. The other is fusion, which has been suppressed since God knows. I mean, this is the beginning of, what, the 20th century? And we need to go forward with the future, gentlemen. If you guys are interested, I gave these copies to the council members, and if you have a discussion on this issue, I'm pretty sure you guys can go with that.
Okay, please come forward. Mark Levinson, if you're here, and Jacob Lipa, please.
Good afternoon. Relative to the establishing of the L.A. E.L.A.T. Innovation and Cooperation Task Force, they will jointly work on several technological ventures, including gang reduction. Now you have my attention. So I ask Israel, do you have an epidemic of Latino gangbangers in Israel who are gang stalking, vandalizing, and committing a multitude of crimes against society and its law-abiding Israeli citizens? And if not, what is your secret in Israel? Could you help us with a cocktail of scud missiles to torpedo it up there, Latino gangbangers and wetback asses, so as well as all drug dealers and Iranian terrorist asses? And we would be forever eternally grateful to you, Israel and Hashem. Furthermore, Israel, do a mitzvah for the city of Los Angeles, and you will honor the memories of Rabbis Maimonides, Akiba, and Josephus, and the Rabbi founder of the Chabad. So lastly, please also help hire first and foremost military veterans and pilots to all your new bilateral ventures, and you will strike it rich. Toda Rabbah. I thank you. La Chaim.
Okay, Mr. Levinson and Lipa, please come forward. Go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I want to thank the Consul General for mentioning Ethiopia, okay? But it's not just Ethiopians. It's South Sudanese, it's Sudanese, and it's dark-skinned Yemeni. There is a growing spirit of racism in Israel. Google racism and Israel, anti-black racism. I want you to remember that the Falasha Jews converted to Judaism before we European Jews converted to Judaism by about 500 years. Now, I'm not faulting you.
Get on topic, Mr. Walsh.
I'm not... I'm talking about Israel and our relationship. You see this kind of garbage I get from Israel?
No, you just stay on the topic.
I'm talking about Israel, and I'm talking about...
No, you talk about the item.
...the racism in Israel, and I'm talking about this agreement with Israel, and I'm telling you right now, blacks are...
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Levinson and Mr. Lipa. Jacob, please come forward. You're disrupting the meeting. Mr. Walsh, you are disrupting this meeting. Yes, sir. Please.
Mr. President, council members, my name is Jacob Lipa.
Good to see you again.
Very good to see you. I'm the president of SOMAS, and many of you know me as the chairman of the Los Angeles Business Council. I know E.L.A.T. very well. Part of my family lives in E.L.A.T. And although E.L.A.T. is a much smaller city than Los Angeles, it deals with similar issues, such as protecting its bay from contaminated urban runoff and port operation, as well as dealing with continuous pressure to increase residential and commercial development in arid areas. Therefore, a joint task force would be very beneficial, you know, both cities, both countries, to resolve several issues. Let me just bring you maybe, let me just bring up maybe four issues that could be subjected. Am I down to one minute, or could I get one more minute?
No, unfortunately, we have to wrap it up.
Okay, so in that case, I'm done. I really support Bob for doing this. Thank you very much.
Sorry, my friend. Mr. Levinson.
I'll go first. Mr. President, council members, thank you very much for giving the opportunity to add my voice in support of Councilmember Bloomingfield. My name is Jacob Siegel. I'm a board member with the Southern California Israel Chamber of Commerce. We are a non-political and non-for-profit organization, a virtual business organization. We'd be doing exactly, exactly what this task force is trying to do. We've been doing it quietly for the past 20 years, and we believe there is a lot of things, a lot of resources between Los Angeles and Israel that could be materialized and to create and to give this task force a really make Los Angeles a city of the future, a center of innovation in science and technology. Rather than going over the points that the Consul General and Professor Diego went about, we do have a business community. We have about 2,800 business people, CEOs, non-Jews, Israelis all around. They are committed, committed to act and make this city a center of innovation. Israel is a small city. It's a small city. Los Angeles has got a structure, the brainpower, the university.
Thank you.
Let's work together and make it happen.
Thank you very much. Let's...
I'd like this gentleman to be the chair of the task force.
Yes, sir. Your name?
Hi, my name is Mark Levinson.
Oh, hi.
How are you? Thank you to the president and the council for giving me the opportunity just to make a few remarks about the value of the task force. I think that, as everyone knows, that Israel's prowess in developing successful leading-edge high-tech solutions and innovations is well-known, and Israel is often referred to as a startup nation. This task force will help to further develop the relationship between our Sister City, E.L.A.T., Israel in general, and Los Angeles, and create business opportunities for existing and established L.A. business companies as well as startups, and create opportunities for the growth and development and employment here in the city. So I would like to just encourage the passage of the task force bill.
Thank you. On that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Ms. Martinez, item 18.
President, I know we have cards on this item, but I wanted to quickly just thank the California Work and Family Coalition for working with us on this issue. We have finally, and for paying for the posters on the Paid Family Leave Act. We've been working with all the departments that interact with some of our families. It's important to get the word out and awareness that in California, we already pay into the system, the disability fund, and entitles us to six weeks of paid family leave for us to bond with our children, to be caretakers, and to be able to take care of our families. So I just wanted to thank all of you for supporting this, and the posters are here. And we'll be working with our women's status on women to also make sure that all the departments that interact with our families have the information so that they can take advantage of this very important legislation that was passed almost 12 years ago.
Okay, Genevieve Colvin and, uh-oh, is it Donna Benton? I can't quite see the first name. If you guys would please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Genevieve Colvin. I'm with Breastfeed LA. We are a nonprofit advocacy organization, working with the 58 birthing hospitals here in the county of Los Angeles and with large employers to support lactation accommodations. I'm very, very proud to be here today to thank the city council and especially Councilmember Martinez for taking up the issue of paid family leave. In 2011, the U.S. Surgeon General issued a call to action to support breastfeeding with 20 action steps. And action step 13 is directed towards policymakers like yourselves, asking them to work towards maternity leave for model mothers. California has had this since 2002. It was implemented in 2004, yet the awareness in L.A. County is the lowest, and one in four babies is born here in our county. In addition, I know, Mr. President, that the 2020 Commission talks about the impact that poverty plays on our economy. And in the county of Los Angeles, there are over a million women living in poverty, with a third of those women being women under the age of 18. And in the next 10 years, those women are going to give birth. So we ask you to support our paid family leave.
Thank you. So do I have Ms. Benton, please come forward, followed by Mr. Arnold Sachs and John Walsh. Yes?
Hi, thank you very much. We want to say, on behalf of the Work Family Coalition and the USC Family Caregiver Support Center, we want to thank you for voting for this bill. The education is absolutely necessary among family caregivers. The average age, which is about 49, most people are working and trying to balance between caring for an older adult while this will help mothers. This really helps our growing aging baby boomers who have been sandwiched between young children and caring for their parents. And this type of information is vitally important for that population because it is not used. We've had the bill for many, many years, and we really want them to be aware of what is going on and what benefits they have paid into that they can use. So thank you very much on behalf of the Work Family Coalition for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Sachs and Mr. Walsh, and I believe Mr. Herman. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Couple things. The speaker, the second speaker, mentioned county, county, county. This isn't the county. This is the city. But she also mentioned the year 2004. So this is 2014. That's 10 years. So this program shouldn't just be like getting off the mat. This program should be up and running. What you've been doing for 10 years, the councilmen that have been in the state legislature, have we've heard discussions about how you introduced this bill and that bill and the other bill and bill, bill, bill. What you've been doing for the last 10 years is that this thing is just getting around to making it to the city council. Nothing in the county, that's a different story. I would like the council to initiate forums where they educate and inform the residents about the city's policies in general, instead of leaving people in the dark. There's a lot to be talked about regarding that. There's a lot to be talked about regarding that.
Mr. Walsh and Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman, if you speak, and you should get behind. He passes. Go on, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, or tweeting @HollywoodDems. You're doing an excellent job. Remember, I don't get up here and scream. I'm not a crazy old white guy, okay? When you do a good job, I tell you you do a good job. When you're doing bad, I tell you it was bad. You don't know what to expect from me. And I'm telling you, you're doing an excellent job here on family leave. And I could make up all sorts of bullshit that you weren't doing a good job. It's easy to make up bullshit and attack you, but you're doing a good job on this, and keep up the good work. And I don't need the full minute to jerk off HollywoodHighlands.org.
Stay on the topic, and let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, we're gonna quickly move item 12. Mr. Sacks, Arnold?
We're getting one minute per item, sir? Is that one minute per item?
Go on, yes.
Is it one, just one minute?
Start his time all over. Go ahead, Mr. Sacks.
So I guess, are you opening the hearings for this bond sale? $24 million in bonds for this Swansea Park senior apartments, Phase Two? What was the sale for the Phase One? $24 million. How many people are here for the bond sale that's going to be issued by the California Municipal Finance Authority? How many people in the audience are here to discuss that? That's a big zero, except the one person speaking now. And who approved the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds? Well, if you're gonna approve the issuance, then you must be the California Municipal Finance Authority, because you're approving the issuance. Why don't you do the same kind of program for the sidewalks? $24 million for the sidewalks, that's a start. You have the authority to issue bonds. Go there. That's one of those issues you could discuss about educating the public.
Thank you, okay. We're gonna do 17 next. So, Mr. Walsh, if you could come forward on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, now we're on item 17, called special by Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Our endorsements are up there. Again, I have to admit, and I have to congratulate you. I just don't see tenants coming up here, since I started coming here in the 1980s, saying, "There were terrible violations in my unit, and the city did nothing when I complained." I hear again and again that if you have violations of the code in your unit, and I'm saying this to everybody out here who actually lives in the city of Los Angeles, and as I have since 1976, file, go to the, to the city, and give them evidence that your landlord has not complied, and the city will immediately lean on your landlord with liens, which means landlord doesn't get rent anymore. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Let's vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. Buscaino?
Want to take the Rule 23? Mr. President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Can I speak to the findings?
Go ahead.
Colleagues, on Tuesday evening, after the posting of today's agenda, a local news station aired a report that alleges a few workers at the Bureau of Street Services may have been improperly taking breaks and falsifying their time sheets. Immediate action is necessary, required, to ensure thorough investigation is conducted, that taxpayer dollars are protected, and that the public trust is restored. If we can vote on the findings?
And we'll do that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you, colleagues. It really hurts me, colleagues, to have, to bring this, to bring this item to you today, especially in light of celebrating the National Public Works Week and showing our appreciation to the men and women of our public work bureaus. Then again, it's also the more reason to bring this forward today. The story that we saw earlier this week angered me, because I know that there are hundreds of dedicated, hard-working and highly skilled employees, and their reputation and work ethic is being tainted by this investigative report. I hate that this may reinforce the stereotypes of the lazy and dishonest, honest of government employees, which is 100% false for the vast, vast majority of our public servants. And I joined the LAPD in 1996, so I know how police, a department can be tainted by just a few bad apples. On Wednesday afternoon, the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee meeting, we watched the video of the news story and heard from Kevin James, president of our Public Works Commission, and Nazario Salceda, who's the director of our street services. I'd like to ask Nazario Salceda to come forward, and what I told him in committee, and I'll say it here, that this does not reflect on Nazario's leadership and his commitment to the city. And I'd like to ask Mr. Salceda to share with the Council what you told us in committee, and how you feel, how you'll be addressing the situation. How long will it take for a thorough investigation? And do you need any resources from other departments to assist you in the investigation?
Well, good morning, Council members. Nazario Salceda, Director of the Bureau of Street Services. First and foremost, I want to thank you, Councilmember Buscaino, for your words of support and your deep understanding. The fact is that the men and women of the Bureau of Street Services work very, very, very hard every single day to provide quality street services in a timely and efficient manner to the residents of this great city. And that is the reality. That is our mission, as a matter of fact. And when our mission is compromised, I take those matters very seriously. The allegations presented to me, and I appreciate that Mr. Goldstein came to me to bring this, these matters to me directly, the allegations are ugly. The video is ugly. But I want to ask you, Councilmembers, to, not to focus on the ugly tree, but focus on the beautiful forest that we have in front of us, which is the Bureau of Street Services. As I mentioned to you, I am very concerned, you are concerned, I am concerned too. And I have already started the investigation. I have a team already that is comprised of qualified people, including staff from the personal, the city's personal department. I have analyzed in detail the video. We have put together the listing of allegations, a listing of policies and procedures that, if the allegations are proven accurate, you know, what kind of policies and procedures were violated. But at this point, what we need to do is complete the investigation. We must act based on facts, not based on allegations. So like Mr. Goldstein, you know, he had the time to perform this investigation. I ask you, Councilmembers, to give me the time to perform a comprehensive investigation.
Very good. We'll do just that, and I ask for an aye vote, Mr. President.
Mr. Fuentes?
Thank you, Mr. President. And it's, it is unfortunate that we're having to deal with this issue, period. I think especially this week, you know, we just celebrated Public Works Week, and we're on the eve of a conversation about raising a half-cent sales tax for infrastructure investment in the city of Los Angeles. So it's, I think particularly disconcerting to have watched the news coverage, and I think it's a real concern. And I agree with Mr. Buscaino in that, you know, I have tremendous faith in your ability to manage the department and to get to a rapid conclusion on this investigation. But just for my reference, and that for those folks who are, I think, interested in making sure that we're getting to the bottom of it, and thank you for introducing the motion, because I think it spells out sort of what it is that we need to know. But how long will it take to conclude an investigation? What is it about the process that would help us understand what, if anything, will happen to employees, period, whether it's the ones that were mentioned in the report or any other employee that isn't doing what they're supposed to be doing? Specifically, if you could help me understand sort of the Civil Service Commission aspect of it. I know that there's guidelines, two disciplinary standards, 33.2. The little due diligence that I did as a result of seeing this report seems to really put a harsh penalty, no warning, on folks who falsify documents that are relating to time records or work done. So if you could just sort of give me the sketch, separate aside from what you're gonna investigate, what is the typical sort of procedure that you have to follow to investigate any kind of claim, especially one like this?
As I mentioned before, we already put together, based on the video and my conversations with Mr. Goldstein, a listing of allegations that we need to investigate. Secondly, we put together a listing of policies and procedures that perhaps were violated. The investigation starts this coming Monday, or Tuesday, actually, with a bunch of interviews, in-house interviews, outside-the-city family interviews, to determine times, time of the day, dates, when these things happen. Did this happen during break time, lunchtime? So there are a lot of things that we need to tie. And again, you mentioned it very, very accurately, Councilmember, that these, there are consequences here that may go from a simple notice to correct to full termination. The allegations are very serious. Falsification of documents is a very serious allegation, but we must act based on facts. And that's what I'm asking you, because people's reputations, people's rights are at stake right here. So we need to make sure that we take the necessary time to complete the investigation. We don't want to rush into something, just so one week from now, I can come here to you and give you the wrong, the wrong information. I want to give you my best assessment, not my first assessment.
Sure, and I can appreciate that. So the department will begin an investigation, conclude it. Does that then automatically, well, I guess, depending on the results of your investigation, that could then go to the Civil Service Commission? Is that sort of the process?
I'm in the middle of conversations right now with my colleague in the Department of, Department, Personal Department, and we are right now delineating the steps that we're going to take. That has not been officially, you know, completed, but I'm working with the Personal Department right now in what you just said, exactly delineating step by step the steps that we're going to take.
Very good. Well, obviously, colleagues, I urge an aye vote. This is important, just for the sake of those employees of the city of Los Angeles who are actually doing what they're supposed to be doing. Without prejudice, we will know soon enough whether there's any real sort of issue here to be investigated. And I think it's gonna be really critical for all of us to understand what is that happened and what isn't that happened, especially on the eve of the conversations that were ensuing on as it relates to asking the taxpayer, asking our residents to further invest in this great city. So I don't envy the position that you're in, but I admire the fact that I know you'll do your due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very, very brief. I just want to also commend you, Joe, for your leadership on bringing this to immediate light and action. And Nazario, for your diligence in the process that you've laid out. I've gone out with a pothole crews myself. They've been exemplary when they've been in the 13th District. I love working alongside them, and I'm sure this is a small fraction of the workers who behave in this manner. Nothing could be more corrosive to the public trust than what Mr. Goldstein uncovered the other day. And to Felipe's point, you articulated exactly what I'm thinking at the same time. And I don't do this very often, but I'm gonna usher an if. If it is verified that those reports were accurate, and the parties betrayed the public trust to that degree and defrauded the city of their duty and obligation financially, they should not be working for the city of Los Angeles. I'm just gonna say that. And we have to hold the standard of the crews that I've witnessed and that many of my colleagues have witnessed. That's the standard that we have to abide by, and these violations that are alleged, if proven true, relate to people who should not be working for the city of Los Angeles. And I feel very passionate and firm about that. So I appreciate your approach to this. I think it's rock solid, and we'll all be watching and supporting your efforts. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Sacks. If you'd please, Arnold, come on. Come on, no, just, I'm saying, come on, Arnold.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You got caught with your pants down. Just because the barrel is full of rotten apples doesn't mean there may be one good apple here. Let me tell you, the man's name, you call him Goldstein. Are you an anti-Semite? His name is Mr. David Goldstein. He did the report with another man named Mr. Feldman. This report is devastating. It has video of crews, one of whom sits in the car reading a dirty newspaper and masturbating himself. And all you can say is, "Oh, no, the presumption of innocence." Number one, do not vote for a half-cent sales tax for the, when it goes on the ballot.
Stay on the item.
You are telling, see, they're trying to stop me. Long live CBS Investigative News. Long live David Goldstein. And I'm telling you right now, there's a, this is devastating and widespread all over Public Works. Go to hell, Hollywood Highlands.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Sacks, come forward.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. We didn't hear anything about, during this investigation, about whether these employees have been suspended with or without pay. We heard that this investigation is gonna move forward, but we really didn't get a sense of a timeframe. And somehow or other, I'm reminded of a situation that occurred with DWP, when some workers got filmed coming out of a strip club and drinking beers, and they kept on the payroll and whatever happened with that. And we heard from the gentleman speaking, sitting here, that he's involved with the Personnel Department. We didn't really hear if he was involved with the city attorney. And what if they did falsify documents? Maybe they need to go like Metro and modify state law like they did with the Construction Authority. What if they come back and use that as a defense? And Mr. O'Farrell, it's a shame that you should prejudice, make prejudiced remarks before the findings, because in a lawsuit that come back to bite the city's ass, you're gonna lose.
Thank you. Okay, now, I don't have a card on you, but you can come up.
It's Mr. Herman, for the record, sir.
I don't have a card, so speak, or let's debate it, whatever you want to do.
Well, based on the fact of information here, whether or not it's an allegation or not, we see that the disturbance of corruption, abuse, and fraud in Los Angeles is so horrendous that the crisis in California is a result of bad administration by local government. And whether or not this gentleman sitting with his back to me addresses the issue, truthfully or not, the fact of the matter is this: You did some wrong, you did some harm. You did some harm, you did some wrong. You abused the taxpayers by your action. And now we want to see an apprehensive conclusion that these people are either fired or engaged, investigated thoroughly by your incompetence and inability to react and respond. And by the way, this is a city issue.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. President, members, it appears that the Council has lost a quorum this morning, and so it would be my advice, our office's advice, that we continue matters and not act further today.
Well, what I want, let me check and see exactly how many members are here, but I, we can post and refer whatever is left on the agenda, Mr. City Attorney, and move into general public comment until I have the sergeants go and check for the other members. So I'll start off. Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. President, I think we would be better advised to suspend the meeting and not take any further action. And recess, or take a recess.
Okay, we'll take a recess for a few minutes. Sergeants, please check the restrooms in the offices in the back. Sergeants, please check the restrooms in the offices in the back. This committee, this council meeting is adjourned. This council meeting is adjourned. Sergeants, please have a conversation with the, every, all of the matters will be continued till Tuesday.